Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the December 1st, 2025 Work Session of the Durham County Board of County Commissioners. And as you can see, I am not the Chair. I am Larissa Williamson, the Durham County Attorney. And the reason why I'm sitting in this seat is because on the first Monday meeting of December, we have the honor of electing our Chair. And until we do that, the Durham County Attorney is charged with presiding over the meeting. And at the time that the Chair is elected, the Chair will then preside over the remainder of the meeting to include the Chair of the Vice, I mean, the election of the Vice Chair. So with that being said, we'll start with the public charge. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and residents to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the Board and fellow residents. At any time, should any member of the Board or any resident fail to observe this public charge, the Chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. Commissioner Valentine, would you read the land acknowledgement?
Yes. As we convene for the Durham County Commissioners Meeting, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Kotaba, the Ino, the Okanichi, the Shakori, and the Tuscaroras peoples, whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the unjust displacement and violence that occurred, leading to the dispossession of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit this land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you. So we will start with the election of the Chair. I will now open the floor to nominations for the Chair of the Durham County Board of County Commissioners.
Madam Attorney, I would like to nominate Dr. Mike Lee for the role of Chair.
Commissioner Lee has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are now closed. And I will ask Madam Clerk to do a roll call, and I will ask each Commissioner to say yes or no when, um, when your name is called. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes.
It is unanimous, Commissioner Lee is now Chair Lee. Congratulations, and I will gladly relinquish this chair to you.
Thank you all. I'll say something after we do the Vice Chair. Okay, so now we must elect the Vice Chair. I will open the floor for nominations.
Thank you, Chair Lee. I would like to nominate, um, Nita Long to be Vice Chair.
Here we have a nomination for Commissioner Long for Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. I will ask the Clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Yes.
Chair Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes.
Passage unanimously. Um, Commissioner Long is Vice Chair Long now. Congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
I would just like to say thank you all so much for the honor of allowing me to be Chair for the past two years. I have really appreciated all the ways that we've collaborated. I know one of those years was with the previous Board, but this year especially has been really great to collaborate, uh, and learn and support our new Commissioners as they transitioned onto the Board, and I'm really excited to be able to continue to serve in leadership as Vice Chair, and I appreciate you entrusting me with this position. And I'm very, very excited for Dr. Lee to take the reins of the chairmanship, um, and I will continue to be here by all of your side to support this Board and work with all of you, and I know we're gonna have an amazing year, um, even through a difficult budget, uh, and difficulties with what is happening, you know, nationally and throughout our communities, but I know this Board is united in standing up and representing all of Durham and making sure that everyone in Durham has the opportunity to thrive here.
Thank you, Vice Chair Long. I want to just really quickly just thank everyone. But I'm gonna start by thanking, um, Vice Chair Long for, uh, allowing me to tag along and learn from you. I spent a lot of years on the other side of this dais, on the school board, and I saw a lot of different things, I had a lot of different opinions from that side. But being able to, uh, experience your leadership, your knowledge, your guidance over the last year has, um, I'm not really sure I can put into words how grateful I am to have been able to learn from your, um, from what you do. Your, your spirit, your love for Durham, and your leadership shines, and I think that's undeniable. And, um, what you've been able to do, the, what you've been able to navigate, um, from the previous Board, and the transition to a new manager, to a new, uh, County Attorney, to a new Board is magnificent. Your leadership and your, your stamp on Durham will live forever for what you've been able to do. I'm grateful what you've done, what you continue to do, and what you will do for Durham. So thank you. To my, uh, colleagues, Commissioner Valentine, Commissioner Jacobs, and Commissioner Burton, I am deeply grateful for your trust in me to lead this, um, this wonderful Board, um, into whatever's next. I do not take this lightly. I do not, uh, take, um, what you've bestowed lightly at all. This is very important, and it is my honor to do, to do that. I look forward to continuing our coffees, our lunches, our texts, our regular chats, 'cause I think I speak to everyone like all the time, at least a few times a week, and I look forward to continue do, continuing doing that. To Durham, I look forward to, uh, representing you, uh, as your Chair. It is just a, it's just a title. I'm still just a Commissioner, I'm still just Mike Lee. But this, this reminds me of a, um, my third year being Chair at a, a, a Board of Education. It was dur, it was right after an election, and my older son, he's 18 now, um, but he, gosh, he was really young at, at that point. And he said, "Well, did you win?" I was like, "Well, yeah, I won." He's like, "Are you gonna be Chair again?" I was like, "Yeah, is that okay with you?" He was like, "Yeah, because, uh, your Board does good stuff. And as long as you all keep doing good stuff, DPS is gonna be fine." He's that, he, that's what he said. And I actually did a speech about that, that year. What I'm asking for Dur, Durham is for us to just do, do good stuff, just like Nick said back then, just do good stuff. As you all know, many of you know, I drive a bus which is where I was running in from this morning, uh, my route ended and had to rush to get here at nine. And I know that I am blessed and privileged to be able to do that with a flexible job and everything. And I'm not asking, I'm not saying that everyone should do, uh, can or should do that, but there is something here in Durham that we can all do that is above and beyond what our, that is within the privilege that we have. We can volunteer, we can support, you know, DPS, DSS, whoever, we can support in some, some capacity. And that's what I hope to, um, hope to lead to, is a spirit of, uh, of us making Durham what it could be. I'm just a parent, I'm a parent, I have a full-time job, I'm a taxpayer, I have a house where my taxes went up. I'm no different from anyone else here. The only difference is I have the ability to volun, not necessarily volunteer, but I have the ability to do something a little bit extra, that li, that 1% more to make Durham the place that we all want it to be. And I hope that I can convince more people to do the same. So I look forward to, uh, this role. I look forward to working with you all. Attorney Williamson, Manager Hager, who I've known a really long time, so I, I get really excited about working with her, and the staff. I look forward to being your champion here in Durham. I believe, I am a leader in my regular job, well, my other job, 'cause this is a regular job. And I always tell, I always believe that if we can make our employees happy, work just happens. Work just, work just hap, productivity happens. And I look forward to working to make sure our staff has what they need to be productive for the residents of Durham. So thank you all very much, I really appreciate, I really appreciate this, and I'm honored to be Chair today. Okay, so the next on our agenda is Citizens' Comments, and we have three. We have two in person, and we have one virtual. And I wanna, um, I wanna read a little bit of, um, thought about Citizen's Comments and how we, how we move forward here. The Board of County Commissioners provides time for public comment, period, at a meeting once a month. Any resident of Durham County wishing to speak shall have an opportunity to do so. For those speaking today, please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, provide your name and the organization's name. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. The Clerk will start the timer and share, and share when it is time for your comments to begin. She will inform you when there, when the She will inform you when the three minutes has ended. All speakers are requested to refrain from addressing issues related to personnel matters. Finally, everyone will listen carefully and consider your comments, but we will not engage in discussion with speakers." So our first, our two in-person comments, we'll do the virtual comment last. Two will be, the first one is Antoinette Hawes, I hope I'm saying that correct, and then Doug Hodges. You can come line up right behind her there.
Hello, my name is Antoinette Hawes. I'm at 5610 Catskill Court, Steel. I am calling, I am here today in objection, and I do understand that you don't want to talk about personnel matters. But how else would we be able to express our grievances? The Department of Social Services Director has filed a no-contact order for one of our community leaders. And we are talking about a person who has actually worked in the area of social services as an investigator, someone who is experienced, someone who has worked with the community, someone who has got leadership in rallying the community, not just in Durham, but throughout the United States with the Mother's March on Washington DC, three years now. So her commitment to the community goes without saying, and she is an awesome person. And this no-contact, I understand, is like the second one that the Department has put on her. And that is simply because they don't want to be accountable. We read the reports, and we know when you've cut and paste, and we see when the graphs are not reflective of the actual data. And the problem is being held accountable for the quality of care that they're providing the citizens in Durham. It is not happening. The children are not receiving their visits. The parents are not getting the representation. The children are suffering, and the community is suffering and lacking. And of course, the morale is down. We don't have confidence in you. We don't have confidence in the Department. And of course, it is an outrage that the county manager has cosigned to a complaint that has no police report, investigation, no evidence, no information pertaining to how the manager was aggrieved, other than saying, you know, "You must be held accountable. We want you to provide us this. We're going to hold you to the fire. We're expecting results. We need you to confirm. We need to hold you accountable for your agency's failures in the community." So I think that that no-contact is outrageous, and we are appalled as a community, and we are holding this Board accountable since the county manager is not willing to do the right thing and hold the Department Director in account.
Thank you, Ms. Hawes. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is going to be Doug Hodges. Please.
Good morning. My name is Doug Hodges. I'm the Executive Director and Founder of Swing Pals. Dr. Lee, congratulations on chairmanship. Probably if your son went to one of my six schools that I serve, maybe I coached your son in the gymnasium at one of those schools. The reason I'm here is because I know that you all care deeply about the community. So I wanted to, I wanted to share what I do in Durham to ensure that Swing Pals is no longer the best-kept secret. Just so I can share a bit about myself, I have now volunteered over 40,000 hours serving this city. And I'm very proud to share that we have worked with over 10,000 Durham Public School students in the last six years. We serve Neal Middle School, Lowes Grove, Shepherd, Githens, Rogers Hur, and Brogdon. Swing Pals is a nonprofit. We help young people build resilience through mindfulness and golf. We help them develop the emotional regulation skills to be able to create a safe environment so they can unlock their potential and have the freedom to be. So as I mentioned, we're in those six schools. We deliver coaching in schools to students at those six schools. We deliver after-school programming at Hillendale Golf Course, and we also deliver home-based program. As I said, I volunteer my time, 40,000 hours in the last 12 years. Dr. Lee, your comments were very moving. As a citizen of this great city, I am here to serve you and as Commissioners and county employees and city staff and city council, and I will continue to serve as best I can. And at the same time, I ask for your support. The City of Durham have committed almost a million dollars to build out Hillendale Golf Course. So it is the jewel that serves the community that it should be. On that golf course, we are going to build a 3,000-square-foot privately-funded facility so Durham Public School students I serve in schools can come to Hillendale and have the space to develop those emotional regulation skills. We'll have a workforce development program. We will create the opportunity for Durham Public School students that are underserved and oftentimes marginalized to be able to unlock that potential. My ask of the Commissioners, and I appreciate I only have three minutes, and so I made a package for each of you. My ask is please come visit and see Swing Pals in action at Neal Middle School. We'll be there for three weeks. We rotate between the six schools, between first semester and second semester. Come see us at Neal Middle School by the end of January and the first two weeks of February. Come see a paradigm-shifting program that we have built over the last 12 years that has the ability to unlock, for these young people to unlock their potential and challenge the status quo. I ask for your support. Manager Hager, thank you for your support. Thank you for, a huge shout-out to Ms. Hargrove. You guys have been awesome, and I appreciate each and every one of you. And please, take this personal invitation. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
You can, yeah, yeah, you can leave it there. Okay. And we have one virtual public comment. That is Amanda Wallace. Do we have?
Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we can hear you, Ms. Wallace.
Okay, is my time starting?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, you know, this virtual thing is new to me. I'm usually in person. So my name is Amanda Wallace, and I am the founder of Operation Stop CPS and also a resident of Durham. And like I said, I'm usually there in person, but I can't be today because the county has taken out a no-contact order against me on behalf of every employee in Durham County. So it is not simply the Director of Social Services, but every county, making it pretty much illegal for me to come to a public Durham County meeting. And so I just really want to say for the record how this is infringing upon my right to freedom of speech and being able to redress the government. And so like I said, I'm the founder of Operation Stop CPS, and our mission is to abolish the family policing system. And that, what some people call is Child Protective Services or Child Welfare Services, but it's a department that you five county Commissioners both govern and finance, right? You finance this department. And you have known for some time about the failures of this agency and of this department. Wendy Jacobs has sat on the Board of Social Services for two years and has seen no change. Stephen Valentine is also currently sitting on the Board of Social Services. And when he shows up for those meetings, he acts as if he is concerned about the welfare of children, and he empathizes with what parents are going through, but it seems like more of lip service than actual action. But again, just to frame the issue, over 70% of the children in Durham County custody are black. Of the children that stay in custody, they are in custody over two years, right? Over two years on average, even though their parents do service after service, go to visit after visit, right? You know all of these things. This is not new information. And so, so we're at this place now, right? Where the county has taken out a no-contact order because they don't want to keep hearing the truth. Well, that's just unfortunate, and you know, we're just going to have to see, I'll just see you in court to talk about that. But the reality is, right, you guys, y'all see these failures, but this system was designed to do exactly what it's doing, exactly what it's doing. This system is a tool to control black bodies. Regardless of how you don't want to hear it, the truth is the truth. And so of course, of course, the county is protecting their leader, right? Of course you are going to protect the leader of the Department of Social Services. She is running your slave ship.
That's your three minutes?
But I will.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comment. The next item on our agenda, and there's no other public comments, that was the two and then the one virtual, is the consent agenda. Just listen in our packet. So do we want to vote? Do we? Yeah, you want, Manager Hager will read them, and then we'll...
Good morning, everyone. We have a few items that are on the consent agenda for this morning. And the first one is 250602. This is an approval of Budget Ordinance Amendment to recognize a gift of $10,000 from the Carnegie Corporation of New York. The next one is 250605. This is an approval of a contract with Stiker for the purchase of 11 power-load units in the amount of $364,334.85 for 45 stair chairs in the amount of $319,774.45 and seven Lucas devices in the amount of $181,231.27 for a total purchase of $865,273.57. And this is to support our Office of Emergency Services EMS Division as they provide service to our residents. The next item is 250631. This is an approval of a Budget Ordinance Amendment for a cooperative extension to recognize $1,500 in grant funds for disaster risk management training from North Carolina A&amp;T State University. And the last item is our annual encumbrance roll. This is Budget Ordinance Amendment 2639. Fiscal year 2526, encumbrance rollover, increasing multiple funds, budgeting expenditures and revenues by $14.1 million. And these encumbrances are outstanding year-end commitments that were entered into by the county for either services or goods that were in process but not completed. So the dollars roll forward from the prior fiscal year into our current fiscal year. Commissioners, these are all of our items for consent.
We've heard the consent agenda.
May I have a point of personal privilege?
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. I just wanted, sorry I didn't say this before. I was waiting for a delivery to come, but I just wanted to let folks know that where you sign up for public comment, there are toolkits of whistles that have been organized. This is actually middle school and elementary school students assemble these packages as we know that we'll have an increased presence of ICE and CBP agents across Durham. These are kits with whistles as well as some information about knowing your rights if you see any ICE or CBP agents around, so please feel free to take one. They are free to keep a whistle around you so that way we can just make sure all of our neighbors are safe and welcome. And also know that your rights are that if you do not have to answer, if you're pulled over, you do not have to answer any questions regarding your place of birth or your citizenship unless the officers have reason to believe or a warrant to ask you such questions.
Okay, absolutely. I'm going to have to go get one of those. Thank you for having those delivered here, and thank you to the elementary school kids, you said?
It was elementary, middle school kids assembled these.
Oh, man.
And as we take them, if you have friends who need them, they will continue to replenish them.
All right, very good. So we've heard the consent agenda. Do we have any comments about the consent agenda? Because those, the consent agenda moves on to the regular session. Did we have another presentation?
We do not have another presentation. There was an item that, there were a couple of items we moved to the January meeting. There is one item we'll bring to the regular Board meeting.
Yes, Michelle?
Yes, I want to make this brief, but I wanted to find out how can we as Commissioners know about what's the procedure when a child is taken into Child Protective Services? And how that works, because I'm just curious for myself, just to know, because it's really, I know Social Services is doing a really great job around it, but just for us to know, what is the procedure? Do I just get with you, Manager Hager or Director Clapp?
Well, what we will do, and we've, it's been a while since we've had a board conversation about how those procedures are. We will send that information to you, and we will also have a conversation at one of our work sessions. And I know some of our other Commissioners can weigh in as well.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jacobs.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. On the DSS Board, we've had an entire, you know, hour-long presentation from Child Protective Service staff who can explain what the state statutes are. We have to follow state statutes. And there's a whole process for how a, and there's actually obligations for every person related to child abuse and neglect. And so we, our staff have to follow the law. And then there's a process for investigations, and then different levels of intervention. And there's the role of the courts and the judges. So you're absolutely right. It's a very complex system. And it would be great to have our DSS Child Protective Services staff and our DSS attorneys come and present for, not just our Board, but for educating the entire community. So thank you for asking that.
Yes, yeah, because I think it's important for, since people are coming to us and understanding what this process is, because again, I know it's the states, it's the courts, it's all these systems that are involved. And I just want to make sure we understand and our community understands. And, because I know our Department of Social Services, they're doing a great job. I know Director Clapp is doing a good job. So this is nothing against them. I just think, you know, as long as we know and we can have their backs and things like that. So thank you so much.
Yeah, and if we have that presentation from DSS come, I think it'd be good also to have maybe Chief Judge Clayton Jones or somebody from the judicial system come to be able to share like that.
That'd be great. That would absolutely be great.
Well, and I was going to say that I can make sure that my office coordinates with the manager's office so that way you can hear the presentation from the employees that are on the ground, but then also what happens after that when you're actually talking about the court system and how that works in general. So we can definitely get that coordinated.
And sorry, also the public defender's office, because I know they also are involved in the system.
Yes, we can, we can do all that.
That was a great suggestion, Commissioner Burton. Thank you for that. That's a great suggestion. Commissioner Valentine?
Yes. Commissioner Burton, thank you for bringing that forward today. Having experience in social work on the ground in both investigations and treatment, and so I know a lot about this system, and I know how complex it is. And so, I know a lot about this system, and I know how complex it is and multiple agencies involved. And so, the more that the public is informed with respect to state law and what our role is in the county is instrumental in ensuring that people operate from a position of knowledge and understanding. And so, I look forward to the discussion that we're going to have on this subject matter in hopes that we can clarify some of the misconceptions related to the work that's done in the Department of Social Services, particularly in the area of child welfare. So, I look forward to that discussion.
Okay, so we'll try to plan for this to be a work session item in January. Ahead of that, this week, we'll send you the framework, the broad framework. We've had conversations with the board in the past, so we'll make sure the most current information is there and get that to you this week, but plan for the January work session.
That'll be great. Thank you, Manager Hager.
Okay. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. For a work session, do we vote for adjournment? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We adjourn. All in favor...any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. We are adjourned.